Good evening, welcome to the December tenth, two thousand and twelve meeting of the Rutherford County Regional Planning Commission. And I'll at this time call the commission to order. At this time Commissioner Steve Sandlin will lead us in our prayer and our prayers. Commissioner Sandlin?
Let us pray. Heavenly Father, we thank you for the many blessings you have given us. We thank you for this wonderful country we live in. We thank you for this wonderful community of Rutherford County that we live. Father, we thank you for our health and our families and our jobs and we thank you for the good works that go on here in Rutherford County. Father, we pray that you give us the wisdom tonight to make the right decisions for our community, to make the right decisions. There will be a prosperous, more safe and healthy community. Father, be with the few of us here that on the Planning Commission that have ailments. You know who those are and Father, we ask that you put their healing hand on them and their families and that they always remember that you're in control of things and that you will give them good health in the future. Heavenly Father, we thank you, we love you, we pray that we'll be in heaven with you one day in Jesus Christ, we pray. Amen.
Thank you, you may be seated. Paul Rogel.
Rhonda Allen.
Here.
Richie Boland.
Here.
Veronica Buchanan.
Here.
Will Jordan.
Here.
Mike Kush.
Craig Lynch.
Pettis Reed.
Here.
Steve Sandlin.
Here.
Mike Vaught.
Here.
Jeff Phillips.
Present.
We have a quorum.
This time I'll call on our vice chair Craig Lynch for the reading of the November meeting minutes.
I have a motion to approve.
Thank you. Have a second?
Say it.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Five items withdrawn or deferred Doug?
Nothing withdrawn nor deferred, sir.
Item six, submitted final plat approval. Rachel's Place, Section Two, Phase Three, item twelve dash two zero three nine. Lots on nine point zero nine acres, zoned R fifteen, located off Morton Road, Jones Construction Company developer. Doug?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you. As you stated, this is the Section Two, Phase Three, final plat for Rachel's Place subdivision. You should have a copy of the plat on your tables. This is an extension of the existing subdivision, appears to conform with the preliminary plat. Staff did have some comments on this particular item. This was actually supposed to be on our last Planning Commission meeting agenda, however, the design engineer for the applicant wasn't unable to get the changes done in time for the last Planning Commission meeting, so they asked for it to be deferred until today. Again, it appears to be in good order, but I'll turn it over to Mr. Corbett for any comments he may have on the engineering side.
Mr. Chairman, the plat meets our requirements and also in agreement with the original design that was put forth with the subdivision.
Comments, questions?
I have a motion to approve.
Second. And a second. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
In the opposition, that motion carries. Thank you. Item seven, we're gonna go to item B first if that's okay. Epps Mill Center, item twelve dash three zero two three, new construction of twenty four thousand five hundred square feet on eight three acres, zoned C two, located at sixty one seventy seven Epps Mill Road, party Agnachatra applicant.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you. As you stated, this is for a piece of property. It's located on the corner of Epps Mill Road and Forbes Drive. It's called the Epps Mill Center. This is for a site plan approval. There is an existing structure on the property already. I believe it's a restaurant. The applicant proposed to demolish the existing structures on the property and redevelop the lot for a restaurant and retail purposes. You can see it's about forty five hundred square foot is what they're proposing. They are proposing to dedicate the necessary right of way along Epps Mill Road for the eventual widening project of that. You can see that on the plan as well, something for the board to be aware of. This is served by sanitary sewer by the city of Murfreesboro. Therefore, this will require Murfreesboro City Planning Commission approval as well. We did have a number of comments on this. They do appear to have been to be addressed, so it does appear to be in good order. Again, I'll turn it over to Mr. Corbett with any comments he may have.
The applicant has responded to our request and has made the changes and the site meets our requirements, Mr. Chairman.
Floor's open for discussion, we're moving forward.
This is the Dollar General on the other side, right?
This is actually on the other side of the interstate from the Dollar General.
Oh, that's on the other side, okay.
We believe the Loves Country Stop is on the other side of Forbes Road from this property.
Like this is an improvement from what's there now. We'll meet all our standards, but the other building would probably get some grandfathered in stuff, so with that I'll make a motion to approve, subject to all staff comments.
Motion and a second to approve. Questions or discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye. In the opposition, that motion carries. Item seven A, Rogers Group Quarry, item ten dash three zero zero four, as a built site plan for various accessory structures on two hundred and four by four acres, zoned R fifteen and industrial I two, located at fifty nine twenty Burntob Road, Rogers Group applicant.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you. As you stated, this is a site plan for various accessory structures for the Rogers Group Quarry, which is located on Burntob Road, on the north side of Burntob Road. I will make just a brief correction to the agenda as well as to your staff comments. Our zoning map actually showed the vast majority of this property zoned R fifteen with a small, about two and a half acre segment zone for I two purposes. Upon further review, it does appear that for whatever reason that was incorrect. It looks like that application was heard by the Planning Commission back in nineteen eighty-eight. The Planning Commission actually did recommend approval of it, but the county commission denied it. It's not reflected on the site plan. That was just something that was on the zoning map, so that's the only reason why you see that on the plan here today, but I'm just telling you that that I two is not correct. We'll change our existing zoning map to reflect that that is not present, but in the grand scheme of the site plan, it's in my opinion irrelevant because it's not shown on the site plan and they're not asking for anything that they're not already doing on the property. So I just wanted to clarify that before we go moving forward. Again, this is a piece of property along Burntob Road. The original quarry operation was approved by court order back in nineteen eighty-five under the original owners of the property or the original company that has the quarry stone man. The property has been operating as a quarry since that time under various ownerships. Most recently Rogers Group purchased the property back in December of two thousand. It's a very thick set of plans that you have on your table. You'll see that the first page or two is kind of the overall site plan of the property and then there's a grid pattern on one of these sheets that kind of breaks it down to a more readable scale on the subsequent pages that follow. I will also say that what they are proposing today is really just a snapshot as to what's out there right now, the existing structures. We're not looking at any expansion of the quarry activity upon any adjacent properties. Everything that is shown here is on the existing property as it is today. Of course, as I think everybody's aware that this is a matter that's currently under litigation. One of the issues had to do with several of the structures that are on the property were built without any building permits. As part of the building permit process, accessory structures for commercial industrial type activities are required to have a site plan approval before building permits are issued. That's really why you're seeing this site plan today. So with that, that's just a few introductory comments that I had. I'll be more than happy to answer any questions. We also have the rest of our staff here that's capable of answering questions as well, as well as representatives from the Rogers Group Quarry itself. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Doug, I'd like to address a couple of legal questions. I'm sure most Planning Commissioners received a letter. Axon, who works for Mitchell and Mitchell Attorneys, about the I two, you've addressed that. And also, site plan cannot be approved under existing law and they don't qualify for non-conforming structures. If you would comment or could comment on that.
Yes, sir. Yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you. In regards to the non-conforming issue, what I'll submit to you for consideration, again, this was a use that was originally submitted under the pre nineteen eighty-four zoning ordinance. Now, a new ordinance took effect in nineteen eighty-four while this matter was still under litigation due to actions taken by the Planning Commission at that time. Ultimately, the courts did side with the Stone Man Quarry group at the time and allowed them to begin operation. Therefore, they became what's called a non-conforming use, basically a grandfathered use at that point. Moving forward, state law does allow for the expansion of non-conforming uses on the property which it was approved on, not on adjacent properties. It's very specific about that, but does go on to say that they are allowed to expand operations on the subject property. They're also allowed to build additional structures on the property as well. Again, this is consistent with what state law says. So the use and the structures on the property, again, are just part of the overall non-conforming status that the quarry has due to the fact that it was approved under the old regulations, even though it wasn't approved until nineteen eighty-five by the courts moving forward. Hope that answers the question. That's just a brief overview of that. Mr. McCray, do you have anything further?
I'm pretty sure the last Planning Commissioners got the letter or it was called.
Have you had any questions as a result of that that Doug or Josh or Ms. Elizabeth, any of us could answer? Any questions?
Mr. Chairman, one thing I guess that I need to ask is why are we hearing it? I didn't think at first we were going to hear anything until after the new zoning regulations ordinance was put into play, which would have been January one. And we're hearing this. I've got quite a few things, but if we'll address that first, I guess.
Well, and I guess my, the answer to that question really is, in my opinion at least, I don't think it's really relevant if they did it tonight or if they did it after the new year. It'll still be a grandfathered use, non-conforming regardless of whether or not it's considered tonight or if it's considered under our new code. Really, it would still just be a matter for site plan approval. The use of the property doesn't change. The non-conforming status of the property will not change just because we pass a new code. Now, again, and as long as far as the site plan is concerned, I really don't think the site plan requirements are changing significantly. What we're asking for today in a site plan is pretty much what we're gonna be asking for after the first of the year for site plans. So I don't think they necessarily gain or lose anything if it's voted up or down tonight or if it's voted up or down after the new code takes effect.
Well, what draws me into question, I guess, on this more than anything is that it's pretty detailed in this site plan, which I assume we need in the Building Codes Department according to the past lawsuits or whatever, I'm not for sure. This lawsuit here hasn't been finalized, up or down, which way, whatever, has not been. But I see just scanning through here that there's a lot of things as far as footprint numbers of the quarry itself, the depth, and we're either gonna approve or deny, and I don't think we can approve or deny based with the lawsuit going on because I think that's one of the parts in litigation and our attorney may can help us out with that, but the, I think that's part of it, is the depth and footprint of the quarry itself and that's on these plans. So I'm in confusion there. I don't wanna cross over what's already going on, but if, I'll just leave that question there and then I'll go on to some other stuff in a minute.
Let me, let me go backwards just a little bit and kind of respond to the first question that you asked for a second. It's probably worth pointing out that the application for the site plan was submitted sometime back and I think under Tennessee law that the applicant is entitled to have their application heard under the zoning ordinance that's in place at the time the application is filed. And I say that because there is a new zoning ordinance in place now, but to Doug's point, I think that even if this were considered after January one, you still wouldn't be applying the new zoning ordinance because the old ordinance is the one that was in place when this application was filed. And so the time of the hearing sort of in terms of which ordinance you apply is irrelevant because the application was already filed. I hope I made sense on that. As to the second part.
Wait a minute, we're going under our, our old ordinance as we've been enforcing up until just last month when we approved it through the full commission?
Yes.
Okay, 'cause this was filed eleven twenty-nine twelve, if I see it correct, on a date.
Right.
That's on this plan.
We've actually been working with the Rogers Group on this particular issue for quite some time. The original application came back in two thousand and ten, so it wasn't, they just, I mean, the most up-to-date plan is the one that's whatever's dated on there, but we've been working with them for quite some time on this.
Well, we don't, we don't go back to, I mean, we should have heard it in two thousand and ten.
Well, it wasn't ready at that point to bring before you. That's why I said we've been working with them since that time to get something to be brought to you for your consideration.
I understand and don't, don't take this the wrong way, but we've got to look at what's given to us at the time. So this application, or at least what was on this plan, I don't know when the, when was the application made? 'Cause this was eleven twenty-nine twelve what's on the plan.
Again, the date of the original application was sometime back in two thousand and ten. The exact date, I can look, see what was on the original application.
Well, that, to me, that doesn't matter 'cause we never heard it.
Right, well, again, I'm just, I just was making sure that you were aware that this isn't something we've only been working on for a couple of weeks. It's been going on for some time.
Okay, but I see maybe there may be some relevance to us approving a new zoning ordinance last month and then what, one week later, then the application is made for a site plan. I think there may be some relevance there. Maybe not. I don't know. I'm trying to make sure that this Planning Commission is doing something we need to be doing, or if we don't need to be doing something, then we don't need to be doing it. That's what I'm trying to say.
The, and I want to answer your second question as best I can here in just a second. The, what I was trying to say a minute ago and maybe didn't say very artfully, I'll try one more time. The, I don't know the exact date that the application was filed. What I do know is that an applicant is entitled to have their application heard based on the zoning ordinance that's in place at the time the application is filed, not at the time of the hearing. So to the extent, I'm just creating two buckets. Bucket one is which zoning ordinance are you under and bucket two is when is the hearing on the site plan going to occur? And all I'm saying is even if this hearing occurred after January one, if we were sitting here just like this in February considering this application, I think that the zoning ordinance from, that we're under right now is the one that would still apply because that's the one that was in place when they filed the application. So it wouldn't matter if they filed it in twenty-ten or two thousand and nine or two thousand and eleven. Whatever was in place when they filed it, that's the one you, you apply. Second question, which related to the litigation, I don't want to go too, you know, too far into the litigation. This isn't the purpose of this meeting, but I will say that there's nothing, there's no restraining order in any of the litigations that would, that I, there's nothing that I know of that would prevent this body from considering a site plan application. So as far as, as far as I'm concerned, any applicant, any property owner in Rutherford County, as a general rule, would have the right to file an application under the zoning ordinance and Rogers Group has no exception to that. Absent there being something going on in a litigation that would prevent it, like a restraining order, I think they have the right to do that. Now, whether or not it complies is a different issue and I'll let you all decide that, but just to the question of whether or not they can file the request and have it considered despite that there's some ongoing disputes that are in court, I don't know of anything that stops them.
Well, with the site plan showing the footprint of the quarry, I mean, it's pretty in-depth on the site plan, I'd say. With approving this site plan just for the buildings alone, which I'm thinking that's what we're just supposed to be looking at, we're approving a site plan for much more than that because this is what's issued and we're either approving a site plan or deferring a site plan or denying a site plan. And so I, how can we approve something that, that we have question on or and that's in litigation? That's what I'm, I'm saying, as far as just those two subjects together.
Right.
Depth and width and size of the footprint of the operation.
Right. Again, to, to the specific question, I think they can file the application. You have the ability to consider the site plan and determine whether or not it meets the requirements and vote on it. I don't know anything going on in the litigation that would prevent you from doing that. As to the harder question that I don't think I can answer, which is, which seems like you're really asking is how would this affect the litigation? And, and I can't answer that question. I don't think that's the purpose of the site plan as I understand it. I think it was determined that there were some structures out there that didn't have permits and that's what precipitated the site plan application, but I can't project what Chancellor Corlou or anybody else will do with those cases and I won't try to.
So if this site plan is approved, then the Rogers Group's gonna come into the Building Codes Department, they're going to take out permits for all the buildings that are not permitted and they're gonna take out electrical permits for everything that didn't get electrical permits?
That's our understanding, yes, sir, of what this purpose of this plan was for.
What about drainage and borrow pit and holding area and all that? That doesn't come in play at all of this. This is just strictly the buildings and getting those in compliance as far as permitting through electrical plumbing, whatever it is that they got going on out there.
Well, I think you're correct. Now, I will defer to Mr. Corbett on as far as drainage and issues go and those things. Now, some of those things that you were talking about as far as, you know, stockpiles and pits and whatnot, I mean, a lot of those wouldn't require permits anyway. A lot of that's handled directly through the state of Tennessee. Now, as far as the buildings themselves, you know, whatever is deemed to require a permit, that's what they will ask for permits for. If this, if this is approved, then that's what they'll be requesting the permits for. But as far as everything else, again, the state handles a lot of the issues as far as depth and those kind of things as well as, you know, as far as the drainage goes and everything. Again, Mr. Corbett's probably better to speak on that than I am, so.
Well, the drainage, again, as Doug said, is the state does inspections of the site and we don't, we don't have the authority to go out there and inspect it. So they handle, excuse me, the runoff, the water quality problem, they do some testing for the water quality that's in the ponds and stuff out there, I understand, but that's not part of our jurisdiction, so we don't go on site to do that type of stuff.
We got a question. I noticed the site plan here lists two thousand and six plan edition. Is that about the time the buildings were built or?
I think that that's correct. Now, there are representatives from the Rogers Group here that probably answer that better than I could.
And my question here is, okay, so what we're doing tonight is approving the request on those buildings?
Well, basically the buildings.
Permitting those buildings?
Anything that, maybe not just, maybe not just anything that was built in two thousand and six, but really anything that was built really since Rogers Group has bought ownership of the company and then moving forward.
Well, are we coming tonight to ask for forgiveness rather than permission or is that what we're doing or, you know, why was there not request made at the time that this was going on or what?
Mr. Re, I unfortunately, a lot of what has happened with this particular application predates me as planning director even working for the county. I really can't answer why permits were never secured at the time the structures were built. Perhaps they didn't think they were required, perhaps someone said they didn't need them and they just felt they didn't need them. I, again, there are representatives here from Rogers Groups that may be in a position to answer that better than I can. However, they are asking for the permission now to take the permits out on the structures that should have been permitted when they were constructed but weren't.
Okay, I was just wondering about that 'cause I, you know, I do know, I know myself about three years ago built a farm shed and I'd always heard, you know, of course agriculture, you're not required to have permits, but I did come up here with, with plans for the shed and filed it. It's over there now and brought the plans for it and whatever. I thought right was right to let my neighbors know what was going on and what was happening there too and I, I just think it's important that, you know, if you're working as a business that you, you attempt to do that too.
And I think it's safe to say that going forward from this point that the Rogers Group, the representatives of Rogers Group are very aware of the requirements for permitting structures and, you know, the site plan requirements that we have going forward.
Doug, I'm just curious, or maybe Josh, do we have any idea when this lawsuit is gonna shake out? You know, because I'm wondering if some of the stuff we're supposed to consider tonight is not points of the lawsuit. Just from a layman's perspective, I've heard it mentioned no site plan, buildings built without permits, stuff, depth of the quarry and stuff, and these are all parts, in my opinion, of the lawsuit and I'm wondering why we're dealing with this today? It's been like this for thirty years, you know, or some points, parts of it and I'm a little uneasy, you know, weighing in on something that's in the middle of a lawsuit and we may be taking sides, which we don't need to be taking sides, if we start permitting things and that's taking, helping one side more than the other. And I got a couple of questions, I guess, mixed in there, but, you know, when do we have any idea when this lawsuit will come to fruition? And in your opinion, are we stepping on the court or intervening in any way?
No, I don't know when the case will be resolved. The, the case that raises the issue of the site plan was initiated by some plaintiff citizens of the, of the county. Mr. Jackson is their attorney. He's sitting out here. He's somewhat in control of the timeline of that litigation and maybe he can give us some insight into when that might be brought to fruition, 'cause I don't know. The county's an incidental defendant in that case with Rogers Group being the primary defendant. As to whether or not you are stepping on anybody's toes or, you know, pre-terminating some kind of decision that, that the court may make, I, you know, it's the same answer I gave a minute ago. I don't know how that case will ultimately shake out or what issues the judge will even address. So it's very hard for me to predict what impact, if any, this would have. I don't think it ends the case. I will say that.
Doug, in the letter we received from Mr. Jackson representing Mr. Lane, it talked, it spent a good deal of time talking about the I toe zone and can you give us, and it may predate you, I'm sure it does, give us a little insight as to what that's talking to, maybe you and possibly Josh?
No, I can, I can address that. It's fairly straightforward. Again, the Stone Man was the original applicant for this particular quarry. They were the original operator of the quarry. At some future point, LoJack, back in nineteen eighty-eight, filed an application for rezoning for that. There's, again, it's not shown on the plan. It's not represented on here, so there's nothing that is on here that'd have to be removed, but there was about a two and a half acre tract or portion of the property that. But there was about a two-and-a-half acre tract, or portion of the property, that was requested for an I-2 zoning classification under our current code, which is basically an industrial classification. Basically, what they wanted to do was do asphalt production on that property, in that two-and-a-half acres only on the property. The Planning Commission did review that, I believe it was in March of 1988, and the zoning application, the rezoning application for the I-2 is what they, the Planning Commission... The what? Well, the zoning, they reviewed the rezoning application. They had a, basically, they had a public hearing. You know how we'll have public hearings here before the Planning Commission on rezoning matters? The Planning Commission had their public hearing on that particular I-2, two-and-a-half acres or so on the property, back in March of 1988.
Was the I-2 zone in place?
No, they're asking for rezoning.
No, was the I-2 zone available to be applied for in the county at that time?
Yes.
There was an I-2 zone?
There was an I-2 zone at that time, I'm sorry. Yes, sir. Now, after the Planning Commission had the public hearing, ultimately, they did recommend approval of it to the County Commission. The County Commission took it up about a week or so later, or two weeks, however long it was, month, I forget exactly what the date was. But ultimately, the County Commission denied the rezoning. Now, for reasons unknown to myself or the rest of my staff, for some reason, that small portion of I-2 is still shown on the zoning map as being there, as actually, like it had been approved, even though, after looking at the file, it's very clear that it hasn't been. Now, unfortunately, under our current zoning map, that's not the first time we found any kind of a discrepancy with the existing zoning map. Of course, that kind of goes back to the whole reason we wanted a new zoning ordinance and map to begin with. So since that is no longer, and since that was never approved, that should not be on the map, so it's gonna be removed from the map. So that's basically what happened there. That I-2 does not exist, and again...
It's really not an issue.
It's, no, it's not. It's not an issue at all.
Mr. Chairman, this question from Mr. Jones. On the, have you had a chance to look at this site plan?
Yes.
Have you been out there to verify that these buildings on the site plan are as where they are on the site plan?
I have not been on the site, although I've seen aerial photography of the site as it stands today. This equipment that we're speaking of was put in in 2006.
So you're not for sure until they actually take out applications or permits for all these, for you to go out and take a look, then?
I have the specifications for each of these pieces of equipment that they've been placed on here, the primary, and the secondary, and the pug meal. The prints show the type of structure that's been placed out there, and those specifications will be followed as we get the permits to be able to inspect those locations. And compared to the approved site plan, that's what we'll try to determine, you know, that they're in the correct places.
Then they'll need electrical permits, as well as maybe some plumbing permits on some other...
I'm not aware of that, because that's handled by the state on electrical. I'm sure...
All the electrical's handled by the state?
Yes. Electrical permits, I'm sure, was established, or these probably, you know, couldn't have been hooked up. There's several 300 horsepower engines, I'm sorry, several 300 horsepower motors, electric motors.
So you've probably got all kinds of electrical out there, three-phase and everything, I imagine, yeah?
Right. And I'm sure that they had those approved as the equipment was set.
But that, I thought the state inspector still comes through your office, though, I mean, as far as them having the electrical permits, though, right? No?
No, that's given by an independent contractor, gives the permit out, and then their state contracted electrical inspectors. There really, nothing comes through our office. Let me go back. The electrical permits, once a state inspector approves them, that does come through our office for release. So in 2006, I don't know whether they came through or not. No record of that.
Mr. Chairman, I think we've got a lot of uncertainties here, and I don't know if this is a proper motion or not, but really and truly, to me, to get the feel-good, and I'm not wanting to put anybody out of business, they're continuing the quarrying operation there, and they're gonna be allowed to do that until they run out of rock, I guess. But I'm gonna make a motion that we defer this until, until the court case is settled. I don't know if that's a proper motion or not. We can ask Josh, but I don't feel like approving it, because it's so in-depth here. I don't feel like denying it, because I think that's the wrong thing to do, too. So I'm on, that's my motion, to defer it until the courts have done their deal with the lawsuit, and then it can be sent back to us, heck, the next week, next month, whatever it is, for us to look at.
Get a second, and then we'll ask Josh to give us a ruling on that. Have a motion on the floor. And a second. Joshua needs some help.
Give me just one second here, Mr. Chairman.
While they're looking that up, you know, I want to say a couple of things that, you know, I think probably the Rogers Group is trying to do the right thing, but it's don't have to be now. I mean, it's been since '06, or 2010, or '84, as far as that's concerned. I mean, I know they didn't have it then, but this has been a continuance for quite some time, and I do believe they're trying to do the right thing. But I think we're getting in the middle of something we don't need to be getting in the middle of. And whether it's helping the lawsuit or hurting the lawsuit, I don't feel comfortable either way for this body to be saying up or down on something that's, it's pretty extensive. And I want to make sure we're doing what we're supposed to be doing.
Can I make a comment? Well, while Josh is studying, this is nothing more than an as-built, correct? I mean, this is what's out there, and they've just put it on paper. So I'm not sure how the lawsuit really plays in one way or the other. This is just a technical drawing on the structures and the size of the quarry, the tree line, the boundaries, as-built, as-is, right? And this is the first time we've really had a document like this on this particular piece of property. So I don't know how it could really hurt or hinder, or really have anything to do with the lawsuit. All we're doing is approving a as-built site plan, which every project that comes before us must have an as-built at the end. So I'm not, I'm not really sure what the fuss is.
Part of the lawsuit.
But it's a site plan, it's an as-built site plan on what conditions exist right now out there. So anything in the future they would want to do, they would have to come back, and that being a building...
Oh, I totally understand that. I understand that. As a matter of fact, this may hurt them in their lawsuit. This may hurt the Rogers Group, because that's part of it, as far as the footprint of this quarrying operation, the depth of the quarrying operation, and that's in here. So it could hurt them. But I'm saying we don't need to get in the middle of it as far as a Planning Commission is concerned.
So you're denying, you would, your motion is to deny the site plan? Or to defer? To defer?
Josh, we've deferred issues a number of times, and we've always had a pretty specific reason and a timeframe to come back, just make sure that what Steve is asking we can do, okay?
Right. Section 5 of the zoning resolution is what deals with site plans. Section 5.06 deals with procedure and states in part as follows. Upon delivery of the necessary information to the Planning Commission, the commission shall either approve, approve with conditions, or disapprove the site plan with stated reasons within 90 working days from the date of the submission of the site plan. So I don't think you can defer it indefinitely.
I'm sorry, Josh. So you said we could or could not defer?
Could not.
Okay.
Says here, 5.06 gives you 90 days, 90 working days from the date upon which delivery of the necessary information to the Planning Commission has been made.
All right, so let me ask you, a clarification. Is that 90 days from when this was submitted to staff, or 90 days from today, when we, as a commissioner, are looking at it? It would be to staff, wouldn't it? It was actually recorded and stamped back in 2010, or something like that, right?
Well, I think when the, I'll let Doug speak to this, but I think this relates to all necessary information, and I suspect when they submitted the initial information, that was not all necessary information. So I don't think the date was running at that point.
Like I said earlier in the meeting, this is something we've been dealing with the Rogers Group for quite some time. I looked at the original application, it was submitted back in October of 2010. The original plan had a lot of deficiencies on it, as I recall, so many that we really couldn't do an adequate review of the plan. So we sent, basically, a copy of our checklist to them and said, "Here, please try again", essentially. Since that time, you know, we've reviewed another submittal on the same application, and we've had comments about three or four different times. I forget exactly how many we've looked at it now. But this past time, where they, basically, the set that you have before you right now was the first time we felt we had something that could be brought to your attention for action at that point. So as far as when the 90 days started, again, it's, I would say, probably when we received that most up-to-date set, that we felt more comfortable bringing at that point. So that's kind of our take on that.
All right, well, then, let me ask you a question. This is a pretty thorough site plan, and it's one that you and Rogers Group have traded comments back and forth for some time.
That's correct.
I will ask you, and I will also ask Mr. Jones, as this is currently drawn as what I will call an as-built, does this meet your requirements for the site plan?
I think for the purposes we discussed today, yes, it does. Now, again, I will say, and I think we've alluded to this earlier as well, and again, this is, like you said, this is an as-built plan for what's currently out there. If they want to construct other buildings on the property, other structures, machinery, whatnot, that would have to come back before us for further site plan review. This, well, this is, I mean, I won't say, this is, I mean, again, it's a plan we've been working on for quite some time. I mean, but obviously, we'll abide by whatever the commission's wishes are.
I mean, this should have been done 20 years ago.
Well, it should have been done whenever they put new structures on the property. And, you know, several of the things that are on there, and I, obviously, I don't know what, I can't really comment on all the structures that have been there since the 80s, but, you know, Rogers Group did inherit quite a bit of this. You know, they have added things, but, I mean, they just didn't buy a piece of property or the business on the property, and it was just blank. I mean, there were structures there. I mean, we're really just talking about the structures that they have been responsible for putting up.
And I understand that, based on the court order from several years ago, they have the right to expand on this piece of property, within the boundaries of this piece of property.
Right, the court order gave them, and we're talking about the 1985 court action, that gave them the ability to begin operation based on the site plan that was originally submitted to the Planning Commission back in the early 80s. Tennessee Code Annotated State Law is what allows them to expand on the property.
So when, if they bring in additional equipment, that crushers, conveyor belts, things like that, they really don't need to come to us for approval for that, do they? Because that's machinery.
Depends on, a lot of it depends on what the definition of structure is. In our current code, it's pretty much anything that's built. So while it may not be a habitable structure, we still would probably want to see it on the site plan.
Right, okay.
So in that regard, yes, it probably would, we probably would want to see a site plan, and depending upon what Mr. Jones determines, as far as what needs permits or not, I'd let him make that determination.
So in reality, if they've put a structure out here, a building, a garage, an office, whatever it is, they should have come before this group and asked for an approval to establish a new building.
I believe that's my interpretation of this. Yes, sir, they should have done that.
And is it clear that they did that? Is there a building out there that they've put on that did not get permitted?
Well, Mr. Jones has looked over this plan and talked with Rogers Group's officials, and he has informed them which structures would require permits and which ones wouldn't.
Okay. I mean, Pett has said something about, you know, forgiveness and ask permission kind of thing. I'm not gonna say that I'm forgiving Rogers Group for doing something that they should have done permit-wise. They still should do that, and if there's any other penalties or anything that go along with that, that should be enforced. But I view this as a site plan review submission. It's an as-built, it details in full detail exactly what's out there now, which is the roadmap that codes needs, that planning needs for any future expansions or anything that comes from this piece of property. So that being the case, and if Josh is correct and we can't defer, I would make a motion that we approve this site plan.
Well, there's already a motion on the floor. We've got a motion on the floor. Let's get an absolute answer to that motion. I think the motion was to defer until litigation had ended, pretty much. Is that right, Steve? Was that the motion? And that motion is inappropriate or appropriate?
I think that motion conflicts with Section 5.06 of the zoning resolution.
Inappropriate.
This the old zoning ordinance thing we're looking at?
Right. It's the old one. It's currently in place.
Because it's still, our current ordinance that we're talking about is still in effect until the end of the year, so then we'll be under the new code. Well, that's true.
I have a question before I vote.
Let's, before we go on, let's just say that we've been told by counsel that that motion is inappropriate and will not take action on it. So we'll need another motion to defer for another specific reason. Josh, what you were saying is that we can't defer more than 90 days, and your motion didn't have an end date on it. Commissioner Sandlin.
The judge hasn't given us an end date on his...
Correct.
...on his judgment, so I really hate to do it. I will defer, but before another motion hits the floor, I would like to suspend the rules, but I would yield here to the commissioner who has a question first.
Mr. Chairman, can I inject that that motion that's on the floor, something needs to be done with that motion? It doesn't, it doesn't just go away. So you're either gonna have to withdraw the motion, or you need to vote on the motion.
How can we vote on something that's illegal, Josh?
Vote it down, I guess. But it's got a motion and a second, so it's on the floor.
Hey, I'll...
My question is kind of a follow-up to what Mike was saying, and the complexities of this application are not lost on me at all, but to just indulge me for a second to try to simplify what we're looking at. We have had situations, administrative situations in the past, where we've discovered buildings that didn't, that weren't permitted. And so if there were not litigation involved, and this were not a quarry, this conversation would have lasted about five minutes, I suspect. So, because we do administrative cleanup from time to time on people who build things and don't get permission, don't do things in the proper order. Is that correct?
That is correct.
So what's complicating this is the fact that it is a quarry and there is a lawsuit.
I'd say you're pretty accurate on that. Yes, ma'am.
Mike?
Mr. Chairman, I withdraw my motion a second here, but I'd like to ask to suspend the rules and allow both parties, either their attorney to speak, and then the Rogers Group spokesman to speak as well, upon this, this right here.
That's sufficient enough, Josh?
I guess whoever seconded the motion withdrew their second, I guess, whoever that, I don't know who that was. Right, yes. That's good, we're good.
We have no, we have no motion on the floor. Thank you. We have a motion to suspend the rules to allow representative from Mitchell and Mitchell and the Rogers Group to address. Is that pretty much correct? Okay. Do we need a second to suspend the rules for that? We have a second. All those in favor of that motion, any discussion on that motion, I guess, before we, all those in favor of that motion?
Not a public hearing, though. It's just for those two entities.
This motion passes, I'll give some specifics, okay? Motion to suspend the rules and a second. Any other discussion? All those in favor of that motion? All those in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposition? Call the roll, gal.
Richie Boland. Veronica Buchanan. Will Jordan. Mike Kush. Craig Lynch. Pettis Reed. Steve Sandlin. Mike Vaught. Jeff Phillips.
Aye.
You have seven yeses and two noes, one pass. So, yes, that's...
Robert's Rules of Orders allows for a supermajority to suspend the rules, and I'm ruling that we have a supermajority. So, that motion passes, and at this point, we'll hear from, if I'm not mistaken, a representative from Mitchell and Mitchell first, and I believe that's Jay Jackson, if he's in the audience, to come up and address. I'd like for you to hold your comments to, if you could, around five minutes. If you could, if you need longer, just let me know. And I'd also like to rule that we're addressing the site plan, and keep your comments to the site plan, if you could. That's what we're talking about tonight, okay?
Thank you, Chairman.
You're welcome.
A couple of things. I found out about the...somebody called me and told me this issue was coming up, and I went and talked to Mr. Demossi. I think it was Monday or Tuesday last week, and Josh did send me a letter Thursday afternoon about this, so I hadn't had a whole lot of time to kind of put thoughts together. But I do want to address what I think is a really, a huge, huge mistake that is going on, and that is that everybody keeps making the assumption that this is a non-conforming use. This is not a non-conforming use. It is absolutely not. There's a statute that...the statute that Mr. Demossi is referring to is Tennessee Code Annotated, I think it's 137208. But if you read the case law, and if you review it, one of the requirements in order to establish what they call that grandfather provision is that the use must exist at the time of the zoning change. Well, we know that didn't happen. We know that in this zoning law, the eighty-four law, was passed in 1984. We know the site plan was not sent back from the Court of Appeals until 1985. So, at the time the zoning law, the eighty-four zoning law, was passed, there was no use going on. Right or wrong, fair or not, that's what the case law says. I've got the cases here. I've got...I could cite them for you. I could pull up the sites, and I could get read two of them today. But the bottom line is, there is a use requirement. In other words, the property has to have some use going on. In fact, there was a case, I can remember, I looked at today, that specifically had a situation where you had a quarry, quarrying activities, and the guy had actually engaged in some blasting, and actually had engaged in some rock, gathering some rock. And he went to court and argued that he was in use at the time of the zoning change. And the Court of Appeals, it was the court, it could have been the Supreme Court, they said, "No, you weren't. That's not enough." Well, we know that. That didn't even occur. So, the entire assumption that everybody wants to make here today, that this is a non-conforming use, so we can go ahead and approve all these things, is wrong. In my opinion, it's just flat-out wrong. And so, before the Planning Commission makes a decision to endorse, in essence, what Rogers Group is doing out there by approving this site plan, which is exactly what you're doing, you may want to think you're doing that, but that's exactly what you're doing. You better get some guidance from your staff about what is and what is not an I-conforming use. Your staff put on their thing, there was an I-2 zone. They put it up there on the map that's in their office, but it doesn't exist. The fifteen-hundred-foot thing was changed. You've had private lawyers that have found two mistakes that have existed in here. Why are private lawyers having to find these things out? I think that there needs to be some more questions. I looked at this site plan. It does have references to depth, which are specifically at issue in this lawsuit. It does have a reference to the quarry pit in the area. Again, that is at the heart of the lawsuit, in terms of what's going to be approved or what's not going to be approved. And, you know, I know what you're saying, Mr. Kush, you've made some points, and I understand what your position is about this, but let me tell you what they're going to do. They're going to take your approval, they're going to take these words that you've said today, they're going to go in front of Chancellor Corle, and they're going to twist them, and they're going to say, "Nah, Mr. Kush, and all the rest of the Planning Commission, we approved it. They adopted our pit depth. They've adopted our quarry, our quarry site. This lawsuit's moot now. We went through the process. We gave you a site plan." And sure, it had buildings on it, but it also had quarry depth, and they approved it. And they approved the whole site plan with these notations on it. So, it's a huge risk if the Planning Commission chooses to adopt a document that's got things at the heart of this lawsuit. And just to give you a little bit of a background about this, look at the date the application all this stuff started, okay? It's within months after we filed the lawsuit, which was about two or three months after Mr. Avant Lane filed the initial codes complaint. These things came up because of Mr. Lane's codes complaint. So, we feel real strongly, first of all, that I think that the entire assumption that y'all can approve all this and that this is okay because it's non-conforming use is, in my opinion, completely, totally wrong. Read the case law. I think we can make a really strong argument that Chancellor Corle will accept, or that would be upheld in the Court of Appeals, that this is not a non-conforming use, and you can't approve it like this. Another thing, you've got residential property. I own residential property in the county. You're going to let me put a crusher in my backyard? Why wasn't...why didn't Mr. Demossi ask Rogers Group to come here with a zoning change request in addition to a site plan approval? That would make it appropriate, because is it appropriate to have these kinds of structures on residential property? Because that property is still zoned residential. That was never changed. Now, maybe that's a defect in the process that the Stoneman people chose back in the eighties whenever they did it, but the Rogers Group's got to live with that. They bought the quarry. They bought the problem. And so, I guess what I'm asking is, is that are you going to approve all these commercial structures for residential property? Are you going to set that precedent? Because maybe I need to get a crusher, because I got rock in my backyard. So, I'm just...you know, we've got issues. I'm glad y'all resolved the issue with this I-2 zoning, but we've got issues with wanting to approve commercial structures on a site plan in residential property. Is that really a good idea? Is that a good precedent for this commission to set? And then we've got the issue of this non-conforming use, and it is absolutely not a non-conforming use. Everybody wants to assume it is. It is not. So, those are the issues. There's some other things coming up. Y'all asked about the litigation. I can tell you where that Josh has asked me a couple of times. We're still in what they call the discovery process. We're waiting on an engineering report, which I hope expected to have had before today, expected to have had before today. I don't. Once it gets it, it'll be provided to Mr. McCrery and to the other side, and then they may or may not feel like they have to have their own engineering report. And just to make a note, you know, there's two lawsuits, and one has to do with the setback issue, the fifteen-hundred-foot. We've actually, we being on behalf of the Lanes, I actually requested Chancellor Corle to go ahead and set that court, set that case for trial. Let's go ahead and get that one out of the way. But Ms. Hollabaugh, the attorney for the Rogers Group and the county, opposed that. They wanted to wait until the second lawsuit was resolved, and Chancellor Corle agreed with them, didn't agree with us. And so, that's why they're both just kind of hanging out there, and they're both sitting. But in any event, we want...trust me, I'm pushing my engineer to get this done. We want to get this thing resolved, too. I think the deferral, he was talking about ninety days. I think I heard, maybe this was submitted the end of November, something along those lines, I think you're within that ninety-day window, however you want to handle it. But those are the main things I really think y'all need to think long and hard about. And I think that, you know, you probably made the assumption that the fifteen-hundred-foot setback didn't apply to R-15. Well, it looks like we may be finding out that was wrong. You probably made the assumption, based upon that zoning map, that there was an I-2 square inside this R-15 district. Well, we know that was wrong. You want to take the chance of the third strike and make the assumption that this is a non-conforming use? That's a legal question. I mean, that's a question for a judge to answer. That's a question that Chancellor Corle is going to have to deal with. Is this site a non-conforming use? It's going to come up, and it's going to be litigated. Y'all...you approve this, you're making this...you're basically rubber-stamping that. In my opinion, you're rubber-stamping it. Where are you going to affect the litigation? In my opinion, you will, because I know their lawyers. They're skilled attorneys. They're going to go in, and they're going to take this site plan that you approved, Mr. Kush, and they're going to say, "See? They agree with us. They agree with us." So, I'm happy to answer any of your questions. I hope I haven't gone much more in five minutes, but I'll have to answer any of your questions that you have about the...about it or anything. If you don't...
Jackson? You did fine, Mr. Jackson. Thank you.
Good evening, members of the Planning Commission and staff. I'm Brick Murfree of the law firm of Murfree, Murfree, and I want to start out with saying that I respect Mr. Jay Jackson immensely. He's a great lawyer, but his understanding of some issues of land use needs a little work, and I'll be honest with that. I've taught CLEs to other lawyers on grandfather clause statutes, and clearly, his understanding of the statute and my understanding of the statute diverge very drastically. The way grandfather clauses work is if you are using a piece of property, you have a right to use that piece of property, and you have a right to expand that piece of property. And the purpose behind them is if I build a building, I build a plant, I build a rock quarry, and I decide that I want to expand it, and I stay on the property that I own, I can do that. And if you want to move your houses and around it, that's fine as well, but I've got an existing business. And the idea is in Tennessee, we don't like to push existing businesses out, and we don't like to push them out because people move in besides them. And that's just the way it is. That's why they call it a grandfather statute. We're there before you were. Our grandfathers were here, and you moved in, and you may not like what we do with our property, but we're here first. And this issue about litigating whether or not this quarry should have depth or anything else is completely irrelevant. It's been litigated. It was litigated twenty-five years ago. In fact, I think my father, who's sitting in the audience right now, was a Planning Commission lawyer at the time, and the county fought long and hard, but guess what? The county had no regulations when it came to rock quarries at the time. And we didn't because we wanted farmers to be able to use their properties to quarry on. And people quarried limestone and other things from their farms and sold them in the county to other people, and that's the way it was back then. It was a very different world. But we had no rules or regulations when it came to quarries, and when we knew that Stoneman was coming in, we were very upset about it. And we tried to take it to court, and it was appealed, and we lost because we had no regulations as to quarry uses. Grandfather clauses are set up for that exact reason. They're set up to give people opportunities to know how they can use their land, and what you're doing is if they build a building or they start a facility, you're changing the rules on them retroactively. And fundamentally, I have a problem with that, and so does our Constitution. Another couple of things that Jay may not have pointed out to you is there's a ready-mix case that just came down from the Tennessee Supreme Court. It's probably going to be one of the seminal cases on land use, and it basically says, "You don't even have to start cutting a hole in the ground. You don't have to start building a building. If you've got mineral rights there and you intend to exploit them, you don't even have to have the permits yet. You've got vested land use." And if somebody comes in and tries to say, "All right, well, we don't want you to have rock quarries, or we're going to put new rules on you," well, they can't do that. You've got a vested property right at that point in your grandfather, and that's the way the rule is. And increasingly in Tennessee, they've been expanding the grandfather clause for these exact reasons, for communities that are coming in and trying to take away people's property rights, basically retroactively. When people have the intent to do something with their property that's legal, that's ethical, that is environmentally defensible, then you can't just come in and decide that you don't want them to do that anymore. Now, you can pass the rules going forward, but you can't pass the rules going back. And we've had this quarry here for a long time. They've been a great corporate citizen. They actually built the Parthenon a hundred years ago in Nashville. They did the redo of the Parthenon. They've laid aggregate all over this county. They've done a lot for our community. So, they're not only...they've run a good ship out there, so to speak. I don't know if y'all have been out there, but it's a beautiful facility. But, you know, they've got a right to do it, and trying to put rules and regulations on them retroactively, it's unfair, and it's not what the law says that you should do. What they've asked for is a site plan approval, and frankly, from a legal standpoint, we don't think we need one. The court said that we had the right, that is, Stoneman had the right to build a quarry. There were no rules and regulations at the time. They could just go out there and start digging. But rather than do that a number of years ago, and Doug, you can correct me, maybe 2008, 2009, we started working with you on this facility, and it came to our attention that the county wanted a site plan. And we said, "Well, we don't necessarily think we have to have one, but we'll do one for you. You want to know what's out there? We're happy to be able to tell you what's out there." And we started down with what has been a very long process. Obviously, a quarry is a large operation. It has a lot of moving parts. It's got a lot of machinery. It has a lot of different things that go with it. The couple of things that we did not have building permits for were machinery. These are not structures, as you would think of, that you would live in. You can't eat lunch there. You can't take a lunch break there. We're talking about crushers. We're talking about towers that screen out stone. We're talking about equipment, necessary, pertinent mechanical equipment. We're not talking about break rooms or cafeterias or things like that. We're talking about machinery that goes along with a rock quarry. And we were not aware, and there was some misunderstanding with codes about whether or not we needed to have permits, building permits for those, but we've agreed to do it. As good corporate citizens, we want to make the Planning Commission happy. We want to make staff happy, and if y'all ask us to do something, y'all being me as represented for the Rogers Group, then we're going to do it if it's reasonable. And some of the things that they've put on site recently, for example, their large tower there, one of the reasons they spent...I can't remember the exact figure, but $100,000 almost on the screening was to reduce the noise to neighbors. They didn't have to do that. They could have just thrown it up. It would have met the building and codes plans, but they did that to reduce the noise and dust, to try to be better neighbors. This is a heavily wooded site. This is a facility they have a right under law to operate, and they're not asking to expand anything right now before you. All they're asking for is for you to approve what they've got in place. Nothing more, nothing less. And, you know, from a legal standpoint, it's arguable whether or not we even needed to do that under the court ruling from the eighties, but we're doing that. And we've also been asked to have the equipment that's on site, some of which our clients built, some of which was pre-existing, to have building permits for it. It's...you know, they're not structures. They're equipment. Whether or not they meet the definition of what really needs a building permit or not, we're not going to make that argument with you. We'll get them licensed. We'll get the building permits for them. We'll pay the appropriate... And we've got regulations above and beyond just the county regulations. OSHA, which controls mining, controls the site, as well as the state does as well. So there are multiple levels of regulatory bodies who look at these facilities. And if the depth right now on the site plan is an issue, we'll drop that. We can take the depth off. That was one of the requirements that Doug asked in our comments. And we started out with a laundry list of comments that Doug has. And anybody who knows Doug knows that Doug is a very detail-oriented person, which is good. And we had a laundry list, probably 40 things, when we first started this plan. And we went through one by one and checked them off to Doug's satisfaction. And one of the things he wanted was, "How deep is the pit?" And we didn't know, honestly. So we had to sink weights down into the pit to measure it, because it's deep, and it's full of water. And if y'all would like to remove that from the site plan, that's fine. But the litigation that's before the courts right now has to do the expansion of the facility that's going onto additional land, has absolutely nothing to do with the existing facility whatsoever. The courts can rule up or down on whether or not the Rogers Group has a right to expand onto additional property. But as things stand right now, the footprint you have, they're grandfathered. And they can continue their operations there, but they want to do it in a way that they're good corporate citizens. And if they have a request from Doug or staff or anyone else about something that they may not necessarily have to do, but that y'all would like to see them do, then we're amenable to talking and sitting down and working through those things with you, like the site plan, like the building permits, and a number of other things. They want to be good corporate citizens. They really do. But nothing that we're asking for today is something that's not already built, and not something that they don't already have a right to have to operate. And to have a rock quarry, you have to have the equipment that goes with it. And, I mean, we're way past the days of steam shovels and pickaxes. And the equipment that's out there moves the stone from the bottom of the pit, up the side of the pit, and crushes it, and then runs it through grates and gets it to different aggregate sizes. And that's what it does. There are a couple of other structures on-site that are basically, there's where you check in to make sure that you get your hard hat and your boots, and if you get to go out there, you get to wear the cool yellow jackets and that kind of stuff, like you do on construction sites. And then there's another little meeting room, but other than that, it's a construction facility. It's a mine. Plain and simple, and that's it. I guess a couple more things I'd like to say, and I don't want to speak too long, is this litigation that's pending before the court system, it doesn't have anything to do at all with this site. What we're trying to do is get building permits per the request from David Jones. We're trying to give y'all a site plan so that y'all have a file and you know what's out there. Hopefully, the Rogers Group will be out there forever, but they may not be. But you'll have plans in y'all's files, and you'll know what's out there. Just a couple other things that I wanted to point out. The 90 days has more than run, and we've worked with Doug hand in hand. And Doug's been a great person to work with. He's been tough on us sometimes, but that's his job. And we've had a lot of give and take on things, but everything he's asked for, we've done. And some of those things are things that maybe we didn't necessarily, site-plan-wise, have to do, but we've done because we thought it would be the right thing to do. And we want to have a good relationship with county. But the fact of the matter is, it's a grandfathered site. It doesn't matter, it doesn't matter when the first spade hit the ground, when the court ruled that they had the right to build it, that was it. And they had the right, they had a use-by-right to build this. And a lot of what, and I say this very respectfully, and this is Jay's job, Mr. Jackson's job, what he's saying is red herring, and that's just the truth. All this stuff about grandfather clauses and how it's gonna mess up the litigation on the other site, the other pieces of property, that's just not true. What happens on this site, they've got a right to do. They're gonna continue operating the facility, and they will till the reserves are gone. The expansion of the facility onto existing neighboring sites, that's something that's gonna have to come back before y'all after the litigation. And the courts are gonna decide one way or the other, and they're probably gonna kick some things back down for y'all to talk about. But what we're talking about today is what's there and what's there only. And that's pretty much it. One thing that I would point out is, and I think it's fair to say, and I would like somebody to ask again, does the site plan meet the county's requirements? And we've worked very hard with our legal staff to make sure that it meets all the county's requirements. And if it does, we would ask for you to give us a favorable consideration. The deferral, we've had this submitted for many more than 90 days, and we'll give Doug a lot more slack than the time that we actually had had it submitted, because he's had comments and questions, and it's a big site that needed work. But it's been submitted for more than 90 days, and the rules say, you know, y'all have to consider it. And we believe it meets every requirement that staff has laid out and every other legal requirement. And it also meets the requirements that are set by OSHA and the state as well. So we've got three regulatory bodies looking at us, and then we're adding y'all as well because we're giving y'all a site plan and saying, "Here's exactly what we got, guys." So those are my comments. I know I'm a little long-winded. If you've got questions about anything, feel free to ask me. If I don't know, we do have engineers and people from the facility in the crowd who can answer them. I'm just a lawyer. I'm not an engineer.
Mr. Chairman, I have a couple of questions. Mr. Murfree.
Sir.
Steve Sandlin, District 9, which this is in my district, which makes me more concerned than anyone else, I'd assume, probably, besides maybe somebody living right next door. New on this plan is in pink or magenta color, whatever. "New plant," it says. So it looks like you, primary crusher station, that's new, and the line going all the way to the surge pile is new, all the way back down to the screen tower is new, and then back, and then the base stone pile, all that, so all that's new.
There were some upgrades that were done to the site, yes, when it was...
New, like, new, this year, 2012, new 2006.
I believe that I've got some notes, and if you'll give me one second, and I may have to phone a friend here.
Okay.
2006.
2006 is when it was new.
And we applied to get permits at that time, I believe. Was that not correct?
We applied to get permits. We wanted to report that the county was saying that the site power was to be built all of us. We had to build permits. We had to work with the county. We had to...
So...
David, I didn't think we had any permits.
I don't recall permits being taken out by the Rogers Group in our records.
Now, there was some debate about whether or not the mechanical equipment that was added needed building permits or not. And there aren't that many facilities in Rutherford County that have equipment like this. So Hoover would be your only other analogous, probably, site. And, you know, we, rather than have the debate about whether or not we needed permitting or not permitting, we said, "We'll do it if you want us to."
New grease containment then, that's probably '06. New concrete settling cells. That's not a concrete plant.
I don't believe so.
That's just for process water.
I got you. And then a new wheel wash thing, so that was...
Mr. Sandlin, I don't want to interrupt you just for the purpose of the record. Maybe Brian can come up here and stand with me, just to make sure it's clear.
That's it in process.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure, because, like I said, I'm just a lawyer. I'm not an engineer.
Mr. Chairman, and if I may, Mr. Sandlin, the things that we are requesting a permit on is the primary crusher, secondary crusher, and the pug mill. In the past, in the mid-'90s, we started permitting equipment of this nature: concrete plants, asphalt plants, temporary resource extraction, screening, and crushers. So as to be as consistent as we can, when this came up in 2010 through a complaint and when it was investigated, we have no, we had no records when the equipment was put in in 2006 that permits were taken out. I do feel like there may have been some confusion on, because it's equipment, it does not need a permit, but we've been permitting equipment like this since 1995 or '96. So the...
When did the Rogers Group take effect? They bought it, LoJack or whatever, out, what?
I believe...
2006?
Yeah, in that department, yes.
It was actually in 2000. It was in 2000.
Got all sorts of notes here, so sorry about that, Mr. Sandlin. And I've also, at the end of my presentation, I've got a note that addresses a lot of these things that might be helpful for y'all, just have for your files for the future. But I didn't get that handed out before y'all commenced your meeting. It has a lot of facts and dates in it. But I guess in closing, our intent was to comply with all the regulations we understood that were in place. And the equipment, we were not certain, and I don't think the code was very certain about whether or not it required permitting or not. And we effort to get permitting and could not, I understand, without getting a site plan. So the site plan comes before allowing us to permit the equipment that was already on-site, which is necessary equipment to run the quarry.
Any additional equipment?
Gonna apply and go by the regulations and things that's...
Has to be permitted. That would be a question to ask.
That's great. Any additional pieces of equipment or anything that would require permits, as the crushers At this time, this site plan only shows what is existing. We would have to have another updated site plan for any more equipment to be added. This site plan also shows, when Rogers Group purchased it, if you'll look at the bottom left-hand corner on the, in the boundaries, where the two conveyors come from, that is the old crusher site when they bought it. It had one. And what Rogers Group added in 2006 was the three stations and abandoned the old one.
So is the setbacks correct? The 1,500 feet? Or maybe Dell knows that? I don't know.
I have not gone over those measurements.
Again, Commissioner, the as-built is just a picture of what's there, so we didn't check the setbacks. I mean, because that's not gonna change what's out there.
Right. So is it showing, I'm sorry, the question would be, is it showing the setbacks correct to our code at 1,500 feet?
Mr. Sandlin, if I can, I can, I can address that.
Yeah, Doug, I could, sir.
The, when this was originally approved by the courts in '85, that particular, of course, the court case being based on the old regulations, that setback didn't apply, didn't exist at that point, is my understanding. So the 1,500 feet really doesn't apply to anything they've done on this property. So, I mean, the property in and of itself, if you look at the measurements on the site plan, I don't even know if the property all the way across is even that, quite that far. It's hard to...
And...
I don't even think it's even that far from one end to the other, maybe at its most farthest point, possibly. But, but again, it was approved under the regulations that were in effect prior to 1984.
I hope I'm not speaking out of turn. The current regulations with quarries were in response to the failed litigation, basically, that the county went through as a way to try to protect the county in the future, I guess, because they had no regulations before. But the regulations that were in existence, which were none, is basically what they were, what the Rogers Group were able to come forward with. And then the county passed rules and regulations addressing quarries and a number of other things after that. Once again, I've got a little institutional knowledge with the guy with the gray hair in the back. Are there any other questions? I appreciate y'all's time and attention.
Mr. Chairman, that kind of sums up my wandering mind on this site plan. And with being the county commissioner out there, I'm glad to make the motion to deny, based upon, we don't know of the setbacks, RS-15 zone, depth of the quarry, the size of the quarry in operation, the time of operation, and the new plant stuff that I was asking last year. I was just making notes as we were going through. I'm not comfortable there, neither, so I'm making a motion to deny upon those reasons.
I have a motion to deny.
We also have a motion to approve. Yeah, I'm making a motion to approve. Do a second. No, I'll say what you want.
I need some help, Josh. Mike did speak up before we went into this session, but...
He said if we deferred or took the deferral out, he would like to make a motion of approval, but it actually didn't happen. Because I hadn't taken my deferral out yet.
I already had a motion on the floor.
Well, was the, was there a motion on the floor?
We had a motion on the floor when Mike...
I'm uncertain, was there a motion made to approve?
We had a motion on the floor to defer when Mike started to make a motion, and we dealt with that.
And then I said, Josh said that you cannot defer. That's going to be looked down on.
But the point of order there is the fact that there was still a motion, and a second on the floor had not deferred it yet. And you can't have two motions on the floor at the same time. So then I took that away and also got, my councilman here had a, county commissioner here had a question, so we wanted to do that, and then wanted to suspend the rules to allow these two people to speak. So actually, it didn't actually get out there on the floor. If this doesn't pass, it may be out there in a minute, but...
Mr. Chairman, I do, I do think it's right. My advice to the chair would be that if the motion made by Mr. Cush was made at a time when there was a pending motion on the floor, that motion would have been out of order, if that was in fact the case.
Motion was out of order. Now we have a motion on the floor to deny. Don't hear any seconds. That motion fails for a lack of second.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the site plan. It is my interpretation...
Mr. Cush, could you use the microphone, please?
I'm sorry. Thank you.
I would make a motion to approve this site plan as it exists. I term this as an as-built, which is an outline of the existing property at this point. And since Doug has said that this meets, site plan does meet approval, then I'm gonna make the motion to approve.
Approve. Approve.
Thank you, Richie. We have a motion and a second. Now for discussion, just to clarify in my mind, if you could, Josh or Doug, I believe Mr. Jackson, when he got up and spoke, that related to non-conforming and grandfathering. We, we, as a county, do not agree with that, or do we?
Well, I, I think I can, I'll, I'll speak for planning staff at least, that I do feel that this is a non-conforming use, based on the discussion that I gave earlier in, in the night. Now, if Mr. McCrary has anything to add to that, he's more than welcome to-
And it is legally grandfathered.
That's my opinion and my interpretation, yes, sir.
Okay. Anything contrary to that, Josh?
I won't add anything to that.
Okay. Any, any discussion? Mike?
Well, I find myself in a rare position where I'm in agreement with two attorneys on, on one issue, which is rare for me. I agree with Mr. Jackson. I, I do think us approving this could possibly affect the lawsuit, or it could be used in the lawsuit. I do agree with Mr. Murphy that the 90 days has run. It's been two years we've been working on this. Now, whether that affects it or not, according to what Josh read earlier, it could. And also, I have a question for Josh. If, by understanding the way this came down, that this quarry, I, I guess, applied for state approval prior to the county having any regulations of quarries, prior to 1984, that, the, the approval of the 1984 zoning ordinance? If that's correct. If they're grandfathered into a pre-84 statute, whatever statute or lack of statute there was in the county, then do we even have the ability to call for a, a site plan? Or can we even approve a site plan because they go back before there was any zoning for this by the county? And, and Mr. Murphy says he didn't think they need a site plan, but they're going to apply for one. I mean, this is all conflicting to me.
Right. Well, you can see the complexities of these things and, and how these things get very complicated, because you can listen to two lawyers and agree with one until you hear the other one. And then, and then it's very, it's very complicated. And, and as to what, let me first comment on what transpired in the early 80s. There is something of a record about what occurred in the early 1980s, but I don't think anyone here was involved in that in any way. And so, you know, to some extent, the record is, it is what it is, and it's kind of sketchy. There's a, there's the Court of Appeals opinion, but I say that to say, that's what lawsuits are about. So, eventually Chancellor Corleau presumably would make findings about what happened and what the result of tho, of, of what happened in 1982 is on where we sit today. I understand Mr. Murphy's position on behalf of the Rogers Group to be exactly what you're saying. That is, Rogers Group position is that because when they applied, when Stoneman applied, pre-1984, there were no regulations in place. And the court, according to their position, agreed with that. And so, they had an absolute right to build this quarry, pre-1984. And once the Court of Appeals blessed that and said, "You can build this quarry," as far as the Rogers Group is concerned, I think, and I don't want to put words in their mouth, but this is what I heard Mr. Murphy say, everything thereafter would also have been blessed by that court. And they're not even required to submit this site plan. They're doing it willingly because they were asked to, and they understand that there've been other situations in the county similar, or similar enough where site plans have been submitted, that they're agreeing to comply with that process. But I, I, and that's what I heard Mr. Murphy say. And so, if they're willing to comply with that process, and Mr. Jones wants them to have building permits, then it really doesn't matter at that, we don't have to make that call. They've submitted a site plan for your review, if it's approved, they can get their building permit, and it really doesn't matter whether or not the theoretical legal issue of whether they ever had to would be decided one way or the other.
Josh, does that, does that state ruling that gives them the, the use by right to do the quarry, does that then trump all the R-15 discussion that is going back and forth? I mean, regardless of what the zoning was, they said you could build it at that spot, and it didn't ma, it doesn't really matter? I'm, I'm asking, I'm not telling you.
Right.
That, does that not trump whatever zoning was in place at the time, even if it was R-15?
Um-
They said you can do it.
I understand the question, but the, the complicating fact is that you're bringing in the setbacks, and the setbacks exist in the 1984 resolution. And so, I think, I, I don't know. I think that's something that the court would ultimately have to decide if we get, you know, in terms of how that 1984 resolution interacts with the prior approval.
That's what I'm saying. How can you approve it when we doesn't even know it complies with that?
I understand your question, but your question earlier was, can we consider this site plan? And my response was, I don't know of anything that would prohibit you from considering the site plan when you have a property owner in Rutherford County that's trying to comply with the zoning resolution and has submitted a site plan for review. I don't know on what basis you then say, "But we're not going to."
Does he fall under that zoning resolution?
The 1984 resolution?
No.
If the-
You don't. There was a depth there that was different, there was a, there was a-
Just an honest question. I'm not trying to be-
There was a quarrying footprint that's different, I mean-
Now, wait, we're, we're confusing some things, and I don't want to, I don't want to litigate the case here. But the, the 1984 resolution doesn't say anything about quarry depths. There was a site plan that was submitted in the early 80s that says something about quarry depths. It wasn't in the zoning resolution, still isn't.
Site plan was submitted to the state prior to the 84 zoning, or, or-
To the planning commission, to the Rutherford County Planning Commission.
Which it said a depth that they were going to go, and that depth is like 20 times past that now.
I'm not worried about the depth, I'm just worried about these structures that are out there, right? I mean, that's what we're concerned with here, is the structures. And is it equipment, or is it structures? And has that been, how has that been determined what's equipment and what's structures? I mean-
David, if we appro, if we approve this, the next step is tomorrow, or whenever, you go out and inspect these buildings, is that correct?
That's correct. When I have the correct documents in the building codes office, and the correct fees have been paid, and the per, permit's been pulled, we can go out and inspect these pieces of equipment, structures, whatever you want to call them, by the building code and by the structural plans that were submitted by the Rogers Group.
Okay, if, if, if these build, if these buildings are not up to codes, they'll have to bring them up to codes, is that correct?
That's correct. We'll go by the manufacturer's specifications or the engineered designs on the prints that's submitted for each one of this, each one of these pieces of equipment.
Buildings.
And when I call a structure an equipment, you're getting into a permanently placed structure. These are three and four stories tall, some of them, and you've, you've got to go by wind loads, you've got to inspect the wind loads, you've got to do the life safety inspections by the manufacturer's spec, specifications or engineered designs for the wind loads in this area, where these pieces of equipment will not be a hazard to anyone around them. And the way I understand it, one of them is manned on a certain level, has a booth for the operator to sit in.
And until we approve this site plan, you are not inspecting these structures at this point in time?
I, no, I can't, I, I can't legally go out there and inspect them at all, I mean-
So, if nothing else, this should, could be a step in the right direction to make sure these facilities are inspected and up to safety standards and things like that.
That's the purpose of these permits, is like, like I said earlier, we're, we're trying to be as consistent as we can with other rock quarries, with other concrete plant batching, uh, uh, facilities, and issue the correct permits as we have in the past.
David, when you go out there, you're only going to inspect those, the equipment or structures where permits are being issued. You're not going to inspect the, the depth of the pit, you're not going to inspect setbacks, there's no other element to the site plan you're going to look at, other than just the things required for the building permits, is that correct?
That's correct. That's correct. We're, we're concerned about the structures that's been put on the property.
Does OSHA inspect these now?
Sure.
Does OSHA inspect these now? Or does the state within, or does the state within-
OSHA may inspect the operation and the operators and how they're controlled, and the safety nets around these pieces of equipment, to where no one, you know, gets injured from the pieces of equipment. I don't know that OSHA does the structural stability of that equipment.
Question that we call the question, are there, I don't want to cut this off, if there are any other real questions that people have that are burning. Okay, the question has been called for, the motion is to approve the site plan. Thank you, Steve. Call the row, if you would, go.
Rhonda Allen.
Yes.
Richie Boland. Veronica Buchanan. Will Jordan. Mike Kush. Craig Lynch. Pettis Reed. Steve Sandlin. Mike Bott. Jeff Phillips.
Aye.
Seven, four, three against.
Thank you for helping us through this decision. Next item on our agenda is staff reports, and we also have a, a very short training program, I think it's 10 or 15 minutes long.
Yes, sir.
Any other, any other staff reports?
Just one quick announcement, you'll see before you, we provided you with an updated, that is the official zoning ordinance that will be in effect January 1st of 2013. If you want to give us your old code back, they will both be more than happy to take it to recycle it. If not, you want to keep it for sentimentality, you're more than welcome to do that, too. But that was really the only other comment I had. At this time, I know some members from our OIT department will need to come down to the room to switch the input, and actually, he's there right now. And they'll go ahead and begin our training session. This is a follow-up to the session we had last planning commission meeting with our fire chief, Larry Farley, as well as assistant chief, Ken Honeycutt, from the City of Murfreesboro Planning Department, dealing with sprinkler systems. So, with that, unless there's any other comments or questions, we'll just go ahead and, and move into that, and then we'll have time afterward for any comments or questions that you may have.
Our next scheduled meeting, if I'm not mistaken, is Monday, the 14th of January at 6:00 PM.
That's correct, yes. We will not, this will be the only meeting we have this month.
Hi, I'm Ron Hazelton, and this is a video with a message I care about very much, residential fire safety. I know you care about it, too. Whether you're a building official or community planner, in a rural town or a large city, residential fires are a problem. A home fire is a tragedy that can happen to anyone, any day, at any time, without warning. Each year in the U.S., these fires take some 3,000 lives and billions of dollars in personal property literally go up in smoke. In fact, home fires cause more than $6 billion in direct property damage each year. You may work closely with developers or builders, but ultimately, your job is to protect homeowners and occupants. You play a vital role in helping to ensure their safety. I hope you'll take a few moments with me now to learn about home fire sprinkler systems and the standard for installing these systems in one and two-family homes, NFPA 13D. I'd like to clear up some of the confusion and tell you how home fire sprinkler systems are helping jurisdictions and communities like yours. Fire sprinklers have protected commercial buildings for more than 100 years. Seeing the life safety advantages of sprinklers, building codes changed to include hotels, high-rise, and multifamily buildings, basically anywhere we sleep, where we are most vulnerable to fire. Today, there is a growing trend as thousands of one- and two-family homes are being built each year, protected with automatic home fire sprinkler systems. Let's start with some simple facts. The majority of home fire deaths occur at night, when we're sleeping. A fire can reach deadly proportions in a home in fewer than three minutes, so every second counts.
People think they have a lot more time to get out of a burning building than they actually do. And in fact, because of things in our homes, the amount of time you have to get to safety has been shrinking over the years. We now know that a fire can go from first ignition to flashover in just three minutes. That's no time at all. That's why sprinklers offer such peace of mind, because as you're getting your family to safety, that sprinkler, often just one, is controlling the fire, even putting it out.
Smoke alarms are essential and have been in building codes for years because they warn people, where there's smoke, there's fire. If people respond immediately and properly, it could save their lives. But what if they don't, or can't? People at highest risk of dying in a fire are young children and older adults, who die because they don't respond quickly or aren't able to escape on their own.
We're finding out that little children often sleep right through the conventional smoke alarm, and that older people often have trouble hearing the alarm, so it may not offer them protection either. That's why sprinklers add such an additional layer of safety and benefit to people.
Fire sprinklers actually control the fires, suppress it, and usually extinguish it before firefighters even arrive on the scene. Each sprinkler is individually activated by the high heat from flames. Now, typically, only one sprinkler closest to the fire will activate. The sprinkler will control or put out the flames and prevent the spread of deadly smoke and gases. And because sprinklers cool the smoke and gases produced by the fire, they prevent what firefighters call flashover, where the smoke and gases in a room reach a critical temperature and become explosive, engulfing the entire room in flames. Fire sprinklers save lives and they limit property damage. Because they respond quickly and automatically, they often confine damage to just one room. And the water flow from sprinklers is only a fraction compared with the high-powered water hoses used by firefighters.
The fire department comes in, they're going to put 140, 150 gallons a minute onto that fire, you're going to wind up with a lot of water damage, and with the sprinkler system, the heads automatically come on only where the heat source is. That is the only head in the whole house that will go off.
Now, here's something you may not have thought about. Fire sprinklers also protect the lives of firefighters when they report to a fire scene. If there's an uncontrolled fire burning and a chance that someone is in the building, firefighters will risk their own lives to save the lives of others. Why put your firefighters in harm's way? Now, let me ask you a question. Do you think newer homes are safer than old homes? Well, data shows that occupants cause most residential fires.
We can build homes and buildings that are going to last for hundreds of years. The problem comes when we start putting- The problem comes when we start putting people inside those buildings. Most of the fires that we see are caused by the activities that the people are doing inside their home.
Today's larger homes with open designs allow a fire to grow quickly and spread throughout the house. The expanded use of synthetic material along with other modern contents and furnishings provide a powerful fuel source.
Home environment typically now includes many products that we did not have thirty, forty years ago. Multiple television sets, computers, other types of products which are made of these synthetic materials. So the overall fuel load has increased not only in terms of the materials used, but the bulk of the materials as well.
Advances in technology have helped to make home fire sprinklers affordable in new home construction. Now you may be familiar with this booklet. It's the installation standard for fire sprinkler systems in one and two family dwellings, the National Fire Protection Association standard NFPA thirteen D. The primary purpose is to save lives, and the goal is to provide ten minutes of sprinkler flow to allow occupants time to escape and the fire department to respond. In one and two family dwellings, NFPA thirteen D only requires sprinklers in occupied space. Sprinklers are not required in smaller bathrooms or closets, garages, attached to open structures like carports or porches or attics. Now this helps keep the systems affordable. Statistics show that fires rarely start in these areas, and so the standard takes cost and practicality into consideration by not requiring installation there. In today's building code, garages are usually separated from living quarters by some non-combustible materials. Concerned about leakage? Well, NFPA thirteen D also ensures that fire sprinkler systems are reliable and watertight. In fact, fire sprinklers and the piping are subject to rigorous testing and certification requirements that make them as reliable as any other system in the home.
We've been certifying residential sprinklers for actually over twenty years. Just for the sprinklers themselves, there's over thirty different tests that are applied to determine whether or not they are going to perform as intended out in the field.
As for design and installation, NFPA thirteen D recognizes two different approaches: standalone and multipurpose. A standalone system is a dedicated sprinkler system that doesn't share piping with domestic plumbing fixtures. Multipurpose systems, on the other hand, have piping that serves both sprinklers and domestic plumbing fixtures. Each approach has unique advantages, which you can learn more about by reviewing NFPA thirteen D. With respect to piping materials, plastic and copper piping are the most commonly used. The two types of plastic pipe that are permitted are chlorinated polyvinyl chloride, or CPVC, and cross-linked polyethylene, or PEX. Plastic pipe is really simplified installation and made sprinkler systems cost-effective and quick to install. In areas where freezing is a concern, NFPA thirteen D provides guidance for proper insulation and freeze protection, just like you would do on other water piping in the home. A common approach is the use of wall-mounted sprinklers in areas beneath an unfinished attic to avoid installing pipe in the attic itself. As with any other part of a residential plumbing system, the key is to require quality installation by a contractor who knows residential sprinklers. When a good contractor is used, sprinkler pipes pose no more threat of leaks or freezing than any other component of the domestic plumbing system. Speaking of water, let's take a look at a typical system. With the municipal water supply, the ten-minute duration required by NFPA thirteen D won't be an issue since the water supply is always available and will not run out. Now when well water is used as the source, a tank and pump may be needed to supply pressure. In general, fire sprinkler systems require very little maintenance. The sprinklers themselves require none at all. The system should be tested every year by the homeowner or the sprinkler contractor to make sure the flow switch and alarms remain operable. Increasingly, community planners, water department, and fire and building officials are realizing the benefits of sprinkled homes to their communities. Communities that require residential fire sprinklers are recognizing not only life safety, but infrastructure benefits. These systems are an affordable, readily available, and proven technology that protect property and prevent the loss of life if fire strikes.
And from our standpoint, from the water department, a fire hydrant can be a fairly costly expenditure in terms of a pertinent maintenance. We have the capital to install it, and then it's in there for the life of the system. You have to continuously maintain that hydrant, whereas the fire sprinkler systems, you put them in and pretty much you can forget about. So from the standpoint of the city, it was a win situation. From the standpoint of the building community, they got to pay less because there was less fire hydrants being installed.
We have had no problems with any of our sprinklers. And it's definitely a selling feature whenever we go to sell homes, especially for a safety feature. And that's one of the things that we definitely promote in our marketing of our development. The cost is just not what people imagine it to be. The, the trouble that you think, dealing with other subcontractors, they all work well together, and we've had very little issues. And the issues we've had, we've been able to work through.
Communities should really look at this and look at the true facts and not just rely on the misconceptions and the misinformation that's out there. I don't think there's anything the community could do that would benefit them more than protect their community and protect their firefighters through the use of automatic sprinkler protection.
Now you may be concerned about what impact sprinklers will have on builders in your community. As more homes are being protected with fire sprinklers, builders readily learn to incorporate sprinklers into the new home construction process. Fire sprinklers can be roughed in anytime after the plumbing and HVAC installation and trimmed at the same time other contractors are working.
It really doesn't impact me in terms of timing, whether he's there or head of the electrician. So like most folks, I guess, we run the HVAC, then the plumber, then the electrician, and they come in and they're sort of the last trade to go through the house.
Doesn't hold the process up whatsoever. It's a very easy, simple process. You know, a couple of days and they're in and out, and they're gone. So, you know, and it works pretty good.
Now in a large home, an entire sprinkler system can be installed in about a day or two. Municipal officials often have the authority to offer valuable trade-up options for sprinkler developments.
Some of the things that we can do is give you credits for fire flow, for fire hydrant placement. We can be creative with our access requirements, and sometimes we can even help you get an increased density for the development you want to do.
Now trade-ups might include street width reduction, longer dead-end streets, use of T-turnarounds, increased grades and building setbacks, increased hydrant spacing, and additional units. Some communities may also offer a reduction in fire rated separation requirements. Residential sprinkler costs can now be substantially reduced in offset. Homeowners have never been more concerned about home safety than they are now. Builders and developers are realizing that home fire sprinklers are not only good for the community, they're good for business as well.
I think it's great. When we first started it, we promoted it as a safety feature in the homes, and people accepted it, and it helped spark sales. You know, people felt good about going into a house that was fully sprinkled.
I became convinced that the fire sprinklers was the only way to go. It was one extra that you had to pass along to a homeowner where they actually received something back. And by that, I mean, if you have a fire sprinkler in your home, not only do you have the peace of mind of the safety factor for your family and to minimize damage in case of a fire, you also get money back depending on your insurance company and savings on your homeowner's insurance.
It gives me a good feeling when I, when I go to bed at night, I know that the homes that I've built since nineteen ninety are protected by a sprinkler system.
Communities know the simple truth. Home fire sprinklers save property and lives.
I'm tickled to death that this community was so proactive in the sprinkler system. And we have really evolved into a community that people now want to come to.
When a home is built with fire sprinkler protection, that home will be protected for the life of the home, regardless of how many times the occupants change.
The data is right there in front of us. What we need to do is make that data real to the rest of the public, so they understand that sprinklers are not a cost, it's an investment for safety.
I think consumers who are very, very safety conscious are asking about them. They're going to, they, they want them. And, and I think residential sprinklers is an idea whose time has very definitely come.
The Home Fire Sprinkler Coalition is here to help if you need it. Please visit our website at homefiresprinkler.org. Thanks for watching.
Getting on more as we begin our discussion on the subdivision regulations. In time, there may have to be some amendments made to our zoning ordinance as well, but unless there's questions or not, if there's no questions, I will just say that I know that this can be a thankless job from time to time, but I just want you all to know that I do appreciate the service and everything that, that you all provide for the county, and I do appreciate every one of you and the relationship that we do have. So with that, I will say Merry Christmas, Happy New Year to everybody. I hope everybody has a safe holiday season. We're going to be hitting the ground running next year with the subdivision regulations. Hopefully, that won't be quite as contentious as the zoning update was. I don't think it will be, but we do have several items that we're going to have to consider with that. But I hope again that you all have a very safe and happy holiday season.